Call the meeting to order, City Council, Tuesday, April 4th, 2017. Roll call?
Abbott.
President.
Harpinder.
Here.
Dalton.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
McCusker. And Mayor Robinson is absent tonight.
Pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the business of liberty and justice for all. Okay. Need approval of the agenda?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the minutes. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have anybody that wants public input tonight? Hearing none. We will move on to the consent agenda. Sir, do you have any public input that you want?
Myself? No. Well, not this evening.
Okay, thank you. All right, consent agenda. Items in this area of the agenda may be adopted, or they may be removed and placed on the business area of the agenda for discussion purposes before approving. A, just and correct claims, accounting period ending March 30th, 2017. B, meeting minutes for March 21st, 2017, City Council work session. C, meeting minutes for March 21st, 2017, City Council meeting. D, resolution 2269, authorizing acceptance of a monetary donation by Tom Pettigrew for the library. E, summer, fall, evening, I mean, event, street closures. We're going to, well, move this one.
I'd request that be pulled.
Okay.
If there's modification, you have it in front of you.
Okay, so that one will be gone. F is the sit the council work session. G, hire on schedule part-time employee. H, HCMC paramedic program agreement. And I, confirm appointments to the park board. Do I have anybody who wants to pull anything down?
A and H.
A and H. Anything else? Okay, so this A will be B for the council business. And H will be C for the council business. With those removed, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Can you add E as well to council business?
Yep, I'm sorry, yeah. E will be a new, new one, so E will be D. All right, and a second if I can?
Yes.
All right, any more discussion or anything on this? If not, we will have a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, council business. This is the second reading and adoption ordinance 351. Approving MediaCom Minnesota LLC's capital franchise application and agreement. Adopt ordinance, approve summary publication of the ordinance.
It's right there.
Do I hear?
We have Attorney Bob Vose here that's been representing us with our cable franchise agreements. And you did have the first reading at the last meeting related to this issue. And now the, the second reading, and then, of course, the adoption of the ordinance if you so desire. And then also, we need a, a motion to approve summary publication of that ordinance.
Right.
I don't know if Bob, you have any?
Anybody have questions?
Yeah, Acting Mayor and Council, this is about as clean, I think, as they get. I was here a month ago, you gave direction on the last three issues. I went away and, and proposed specific language on those issues. The company agreed to all that language. And so, I think that the franchise that you directed us to, to bring back is in front of you.
Okay. Appreciate all your help on this. I make a motion, we move ahead with it.
Ken, second? Any discussion, any?
I just want to say that I've seen more MediaCom trucks in town since we had our last meeting than I think I have in the last two years.
And our picture is better for some reason.
They're working on it. Oops, I spoiled, I shouldn't have said that. Okay, got a motion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. It passed.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Harpinder.
Thank you.
Okay, so we go to A, just and correct claims, which is B now, down below. Leroy, you had something on that?
Yeah. The only thing I wanted to say to my council colleagues is that when I was on the council last time, believe it or not, I read that budget every time we got it. I went through the whole budget. The problem is that I'm having is that I don't have the time that I had back then to read these things every time, so I finally got to sit down this time and go through this last one. I never read them things, but what I am totally amazed by how crazy it all gets. And for the life of me, the cost of technology today just drives me crazy. Why these budgets change so much every month? If you just take your monthly printout, it goes, some things go all the way from 32 to 4,700, they're changing all the time. To me, we got staff employees, I don't know why that stuff don't stay more balanced. But I would appreciate if my colleagues would spend some extra time on that budget and, and share their thoughts on that because it, it drives me crazy. That's it.
With that, any more discussion? If not, we'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. Okay.
Is there a motion in a second on that?
I don't think that, oh.
Oh, yeah. Okay, I thought Ken made it. I'm sorry, that's my fault.
I missed it too.
Did you? I missed the motion.
Yeah, we all did.
Leroy made it. Motion. And I seconded it.
On the just and correct claims?
At the end of your, end of your statement. I apologize.
Okay. I didn't hear that either.
That's my fault then. Okay, so, the next one then, Leroy, is yours?
Yeah, the, this thing here, I was hoping to get this stopped down this week and talk to Tim, but I wasn't able to. It really concerns me of where this road is leading to. And what I mean by that is, I think it's wonderful that they want to work together and do this, but I know we've had our own education system going before. I don't know if this is something a little different. I also don't know what this is going to lead to, if it's going to lead to more employees. And I also realize that whatever we can do to work together with other people is good, but I'm a little bit scared that, I would like our ambulance service to just be kind of a local, good ambulance service, and I'm a little bit afraid where this is going to lead to. Now, if Tim was here tonight, the other thing I would tell Tim is that I think this town is so lucky to have him, he's a young fireball, and he wants to set the world afire, and he has nothing but good that he tries to do down there. But sometimes dad needs to rein in the young guys when they get a little bit too carried away. And, and I'm okay with this either way, but I just wonder if we aren't getting a little bit too far out there with discussing it more.
Morris? Tim wasn't able to make it tonight, and he said if this, if anything got pulled down, he'd be willing to lay it over to the next meeting.
The next meeting?
Yeah.
Would you rather have that, Leroy?
I'd like the others' opinion.
I don't, I don't see any reason to, to pull it over. For my understanding, is all this is, is that Hennepin County Medical Center Paramedic Program, which, and with Hennepin County, everybody knows it's all and right in the heart of the city. So what they get is all of the big city type ambulance calls, so they wouldn't get, say, a farm rescue if they had one, or that kind of stuff. And what this does is just bring those students down and lets them ride with the ambulance.
It's a training.
Do a classroom?
No, it's just like a ride-along type thing.
On the job training.
It isn't putting extra load on our people that we got there?
Nope.
Actually, it'll help them.
Nope, they'll just, they just go and observe.
Yeah.
Mike speaks from a physi- What concern I have is that, hey, this is a, this is a stressful job, and, and I don't want to put any more stress. So if you tell me it's that way, I guess I'm glad to hear that, but nobody had told me that before.
Yeah, Mike speaks from a position of knowledge, having, you know, served on the ambulance as well as the fire department. And he is correct, and Tim certainly could, you know, address this next meeting if you so desire. But what it is, is the Hennepin County Paramedic Program, which is different than the training we provided here. We've offered EMT training locally before. This would be for paramedics. And Mike did a very good job of explaining the differences, the types of calls they get in the core urban area compared to out here, and why it's advantageous, because they're not all going to end up with jobs in the metro core. And may have the benefit of bringing us employees down the road, but I don't know if that's necessarily the core purpose.
But it's a two-way street. I mean, our people are going to learn from them too. I mean, that's the good part.
You're going to share knowledge both directions.
Yeah, they're right. When people take EMT classes, like in Cannon Falls, they have to go to, well, I went to Rochester. Some people go to Hennepin County to experience that kind of call. So you kind of get the, the different call than you were used to down here.
And I, I think it's a good thing, the one thing that I would like to see is that we do it, and I don't, is this kind of a permanent thing, or is this like a six-month thing, or what is this?
I hadn't reviewed that agenda item, so I really can't address that.
I remember what I read.
Perhaps the council has viewed it entirely.
And I, I, I really would like to, to try this and do this, but I would like to have it in a situation where it gets reevaluated in six months, and talk about any concerns or things that are happening. That would be the only thing I'd like to see with.
I'll make a motion that we approve this, and ask Tim to come back in six months and explain to us how it's working, address any concerns we have, make sure it's not taking away opportunities from our own EMTs, or our own EMT students.
And plus, I'm sure there's more insurance. We have to think about that too, so.
Did you?
I, I like your motion, thank you.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do we have any more discussion?
With respect to the insurance requirement, the, the motion support indicates that the league has verified that we meet the insurance requirements within the agreement, so there is no outstanding question on that point.
Right, yeah. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass. Okay, the next one is, was E, and now is D. In front of you is a revised schedule of event street closures. And you had a additional one today, so you put that on.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. Council, I apologize for requesting the, the item be pulled down to the business section. However, when I prepared this memo, I did not have the dates for the VFW's event in June. They contacted me yesterday, gave me those dates. I included it in their memo that you guys have in front of you, and I would ask that council consider action on that rather than the item that was in the original agenda packet. None of the other information changed, it was just the addition of that item. And these are all events that we have had in the past.
There's nothing new on this list.
No.
I'll make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Okay. All, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass. Okay, reports.
Just a quick update, two weeks ago, we opened bids on the Alexander Court project, the cul-de-sac down there for the Grand State Hotel project. We got nine bids, all very favorable ones, those will come to the council before the next meeting for approval.
Good, great, thank you.
Just a reminder, the hydrant flushing will start on Monday, take approximately two and a half to three weeks. There may be some discoloration in your water. If you find that to be true, just run your outside faucet or your cold water, get it out of there. In front of all of you, you have a lovely parting gift. I was able to secure 200 of these from the DNR for free. It's a toilet test kit. Say, I'll say it again, if you don't learn one thing ever from me, check your toilet, check it often. So we have too many 300, 500,000, 1,800 dollar water bills because the water was leaking in the toilet, nobody did anything about it. So please, 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 call, go online, go on YouTube, call me out there, I'll come out there and I'll get your, all your toilets. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Chief?
Well, as you probably recall from your elementary days, April showers bring May flowers. However, in my line of work, April showers also bring out lots of kids on bicycles. The weather has shifted, we're no longer worrying about plowing, it's snow removal, but we do need to worry about people that are out walking, kids on bicycles. So when you're driving, especially after school hours and before school hours, watch for them, and watch for people walking in the evenings, especially as it starts getting dusk. That's all I have.
Thank you.
We have Samantha Meyer started this week, our collaborative planning employee with Goodhue County. She started with Goodhue County yesterday, or actually on Monday, which was yesterday, okay. And today, and then she'll, she'll be here tomorrow and Thursday. Her schedule's going to kind of flex, but we'll keep it pretty much even, 50/50. She'll be concentrating again on the planning commission initially, zoning ordinance update, and that'll be enough for the short term. And I mentioned at the last meeting that our library director would start on this week also. She had the issue with housing, so she is starting, she's found housing, she will start on April 24th.
Only thing I have, Leroy, I know you went to the last chamber meeting. Dave Maroney and I are going to go Thursday.
Cool.
So you won't, you won't have to do that. Otherwise, that's all I've got.
Seater?
We had a very productive public works meeting today. We were able to move through an issue that I think has, has been a stumbling block, the connection of the Milltown State Trail to existing trails in Cannon Falls. As we approached the summer season and wished to be inviting to bikers on all of these trails, we knew we needed to have a connection, and there's a considerable amount of pressure, interest, concern from citizens, from the surrounding community, from folks involved in other trails, about how we were going to do that in a safe and effective way. So balancing a number of different concerns, including safety, expense, temporary versus permanent, I think that's it, and just availability of sound and reasonable routes, what we have determined is to devote our primary focus to running a route through Hannah's Bend, through the upper part, I'm not sure I'm describing that right, through the upper part of Hannah's Bend Park, grading it, putting fine, I think fine gravel, I don't want to overspeak. And our public works department will complete that work, and the timeline, weather permitting, would be intended to be completed by the end of the month, hopefully. Right? Okay? And then, parallel with that, we will establish some signage on the road, and what road is that? Remind me? The curve? Come on. Sixth Street, right, by the fairgrounds. There's that sharp curve, not necessarily sharp, but is sometimes traveled at a higher-than-recommended rate of speed, in order to encourage safe and attentive driving of folks that may be sharing the roadway with cyclists that may not elect to travel on the gravel in Hannah's Bend. We're going to put some "share the road" signage, just to encourage, again, some mindfulness and safe practices in that, in that area, which can't be bad even if there aren't any cyclists on the road. So, we'll be developing the Hannah's Bend temporary route with signage directing towards downtown and connection to the Cannon Valley Trail, and at the same time, we'll put the "share the roadway" signs on Sixth, with the eventual intent of looking at the experience of cyclists and our community to determine whether either of those routes, or potentially an alternative third route that we have not yet explored, would be the best permanent solution to connect these trail systems.
June 2nd is the?
Oh, yes. So, and the DNR will be here in town on June 2nd to perform a ribbon-cutting ceremony right at that point where the existing Mill Street, Milltown State Trail ends at Sixth. I believe there will be a ceremony. We encourage citizens to come out. The DNR, we will be instrumental in developing whatever that permanent connection solution may be. So we would like to encourage their active participation in that, and I think showing a strong show of support and interest by Cannon Falls residents will be important to that. Did I cover it? It was a lot. Thank you.
Leroy?
Couple things, or quite a few things, I guess. Ron, the park board thing, is there any chance, I was thinking about 13th of this month, that we could have our first meeting? And I was thinking like a 6:30 meeting, and I was just wondering what you thought about that.
Any chance of having it earlier than that? You'd mentioned the last Thursday of the month first, but I don't know what, what I think.
Well, I thought, I guess we would have been farther along, I finally got the paper with the people on there and stuff, so I didn't know that where we were at. So you can keep me informed on that?
Well, there's, there'd be no, no problem. I mean, April 13th at 6:30, but.
Well, let's tentatively plan that. I asked Ken, and he's available. And then, if you can give me a list of the new people that are going to be on there, are you going to contact them, or do I need to contact them?
No, I'll, I'll contact the, they're, they're aware that, they're aware that it was, the list was in your packet, and they're aware that, that they're, they would be likely appointed tonight.
Okay. The other thing is, and we don't have to discuss it tonight, but I haven't heard anything back about a closed meeting yet, and I, I don't really want to discuss it, but keep me informed on that. The other things that I need to talk to you, Ron, about is, and this is really a big challenge for me, it's really hard. It might be one of the most miserable moments of my life, but I, I have talked to the attorney about our issues, like you guided me with the closed meeting. And since I've had that meeting, I've wanted to get back to you. I, I've met with MinDOT with some issues that they helped me with that I, I want to get back to you. They got ahold of me about the gal at the library that's having trouble finding housing, and I said I wished you would have got ahold of me sooner, I could have done some things to help, because I even have a place she could have had. So I don't quite know why the library didn't get you more involved, or why you weren't more involved. I've had probably about 10 people in the last two weeks that have called me with issues, and I have sent them to Tom, I've sent them to you, and I've sent them to the people that I wanted them to go to. Some of them didn't want to do that, they wanted me to take care of it, but I, I told them I'd rather they talk to you guys first, and if it doesn't get resolved or taken care of, then they get back to me, and I will work on that. Two of the people called me back after they said they had talked to Tom or you, and said wanting to know what I had done down there, because it's pretty obvious them people don't like you. And I said, oh, holy balls, I don't know what that's about, I guess I don't want to discuss it with you, did they get their stuff taken care of? But I really felt bad, or, or was offended by that, and somehow, some signals got sent, I guess, that I didn't know I was offending people down here or something. I also, Babe wanted to stop and talk today on the street, and there's such a Babe disease down here, that he's trying to get everybody in the city. I, it affected how my thinking is, I didn't even know if I wanted to stop and talk to Babe, because I was afraid Tom would go by, or somebody else from the city would go by, and all of a sudden Leroy and Babe are out to get everybody again. And that's, that's the last thing I'm doing on this council. I, I don't know how the hell I got started, I don't know what's going on. But I do know that there's, down here, there's, there's kind of a meanness. People feel that I'm out to get them. I had to apologize to Diane, our secretary, because I said something that offended her, and I didn't even know what it was. It came back to me, I had offended her. So I came down and had a meeting with her, and apologized and stuff. There's, there's such dissent and anger and backstabbing going on that it, it just drives me crazy. And I, I feel like I might be causing it, and I don't think that's a good thing. So, I'm, I'm 70 years old, I like to be comfortable in life, I love the town, I love my family, and I'm not here to make people's lives miserable. And I seriously decided I had to have this meeting tonight, because I can't seem to get a closed meeting to share it with you, I didn't want to share it with the public. But I'm to the point where I don't, I don't feel I can get the message through that I need to get through and take care of people. I've, I've had a, an issue with one of our employees, they got ahold of me and asked me to take care of something with them, and I haven't been able to get a meeting with Ron since March 22nd. He had the flu, and I totally understand. And then, he had to take a couple days off, but never got back to me after that, so I can't discuss this stuff. So I asked Seater to meet with me for five minutes, because I'm going to put it on Seater to take care of it, because I told this employee I would see that this gets addressed. So, I don't take this as a threat or anything, but I, I want a comfortable life, and if there's some kind of meanness going on or something, I, I really don't want to be a part of it. And if we can't get this resolved, then, then I have to resign. I, I can't be on here, because I didn't come down here to divide people and create this division and stuff. So I don't know what the answer is outside of that. Something has to change, or some people have to resign or something, or otherwise, if I'm causing all this anxiety, I want to resign. So I will get this figured out, and hopefully hear something between now and the first meeting in May. And hopefully, we can get this resolved, otherwise, that's the, the direction I'm headed in. And I, I'm sorry to cause this, but I, I'm not a mean person, I don't have an agenda, but I, I just want to live my life comfortable. I don't want to lead, lead a life where all this division is going on. So that's, that's my closing thoughts, thank you.
I don't know how many people know it, but there's, I know there's a lot of people that drive up to the cities every day, and Dakota County is going to be tearing out the bridges at, on Highway 52 that go over County 42. So they better expect that they're going to have some delays. But they're going to, they're going to, County 42 is going to be completely cut off.
Really?
What they're going to be doing is they're going to run the traffic down the off-ramps and back up on the on-ramps, so they're going to tear both bridges down at the same time, and make this a one-year job. So it's supposed, they're hoping to have, have it done by sometime this fall. They actually started work yesterday. They only saw, don't, don't feel bad that nobody knows about it, because they only saw fit to notify the people in Rosemount, so. But I know we have an awful lot of people that go up to the cities, so I, I wanted to get word out that.
Yeah, thanks, Ken. Thanks, Ken.
Next week is, as, if they're on schedule, next week is when they're going to switch traffic to the ramps. So.
I think that's the best thing to come out of this meeting tonight.
Yeah. Just that knowledge.
So, you know, go check out their website, they have a lot of stuff on there, but.
Well, again, MINDOT didn't let people know. And now, as far as that closed meeting, I thought it was going to be next meeting, am I right, Ron?
Rob, I think Mayor was going to talk to, to Councilmember McCusker.
Okay. And he's, he's just not down tonight?
He's at a conference this week, so.
Okay.
So what's the process for that? Can a council member call for a closed meeting? Or do they have to ask the mayor to schedule it, and then we go from that route?
I believe that, I guess I don't know the answer to that, Mike, but I think I'd have to look at our, our code on that, our charter. But I think more than one council member, two or three, could actually call for a special meeting or call for a meeting. But I believe that the majority would have to vote in favor of closing it.
Right.
And then if you're going to have a close, if there's notification, depending on what type of meeting it is, there may be notifications that are needed.
Kind of what I was wondering. Because if you wanted to close it two weeks from now, I don't know what, is it a two-week notice period?
Enough.
One-week notice period? Because the, they could get it in the newspaper next week, and then on the agenda for the following Tuesday, if that works. Otherwise, we could be looking at another month.
Yeah, and if Leroy was looking at the first meeting in May, that shouldn't be an issue.
I did, you did send me the attorney, and the attorney is the one that told me to come back and do this. So, and when I was on the council before, we had at least four or five closed meetings. That's nothing new. If, if, and I shouldn't really say this, but if I want to get technical, I wish we'd have had a closed meeting about the Lindberg situation. So don't take a closed meetings as some kind of thing where nobody's going to know anything, it's all being hidden. I want this to be open, but I just don't want to do it out in front of the public. I want everybody.
I don't know that anybody's afraid of one. I mean, I, I'm certainly not. We just got to make sure we do everything proper and by the book.
Yeah, right.
Which means the, the legal noticing in the newspaper, the posting on the walls and all that kind of stuff.
Exactly.
So Leroy, you're talking first in May now?
Well.
Or what?
I would, as soon as you can have it. I mean, if we can get it done in two weeks, I would.
So if we can get ahold of Robbie. Okay.
Can I, can I add one more thing before we're done?
Yes.
The signs that Cedar mentioned, I just want to say that the nine-thirty Coffee Group down at Roosters has agreed to donate three hundred seventy-five dollars towards the cost of those signs. Give a shout out to the old guys that meet every day at nine-thirty.
That's great.
The young at heart.
I'd like, I'd like to add one more thing. Ron, has MINDOT given us any notice about the roadwork on County Twenty-four? Because they said they'd give us two weeks' notice so that we can get it in the paper.
Haven't heard anything from MINDOT.
It's not, I work for them and I'm not surprised, so.
Thanks for your honesty.
Yeah, you do realize that's memorialized forever on YouTube now, okay. He didn't mean it.
Anything else?
No.
If not, I'll take a motion to.
So.
Seconded.
You're a jerk.
Nope.